How do you begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item we have, are there any corrections to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much. Can we have the public comments, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. So at this time, the general public may address the planning commission on any items listed on the agenda, including non-agenda items that are within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. State law prohibits the planning commission from acting or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. As a reminder, please show courtesy to others while providing public comment and direct all comments to the chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any staff communications?
There are no staff communications tonight.
Thank you. All right, so, well, this is a continuation meeting for the last item, if you could, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may, I will introduce item one. So this item is continued from the planning commission meeting that was held on June 18th. The requests related to this item include site plan review, zone variances, as well as a recommendation for city council consideration regarding the proposed tentative track map. And this would establish 16 legal laws that would allow 15 new single-family dwelling units for the property located at 301 Jackmar Drive. Per direction from the planning commission at the previous meeting, staff worked with the applicant to explore potential alternatives to the proposed project. Additionally, the commission directed staff to obtain information from the applicant regarding additional documentation related to endangered species at the project site. And lastly, the planning commission requested staff to provide all documents presented to the commission on the city's website. The following is staff's report regarding the commission's request. On July 2nd, 2024, staff received a formal letter from the applicant, the applicant's representative, the Somos Law Group, which was provided to the planning commission on July 10th. This communication included attachments, as well as the applicant's statement, which it intends to proceed with the project as originally proposed. With regard to endangered species, the applicant's response letter relies on CEQA, specifically the Class 32 exemption. To confirm, no further documentation is required, which is consistent with the findings included in the staff report. As to the planning commission's request to make all documents presented to the commission, presented to the commission available to the public, on July 1st, staff compiled the documents and ultimately uploaded them onto the planning division's website under project I think at this time, this concludes my report. I will say that at approximately 4:00 PM today, staff did receive a letter from Mr. Edmund Velos that included a petition. We were unable to verify names were, or information was accurate. So, I mean, we provided the commission with a copy of that letter, which you have in your packet for today's meeting. Staff's here to answer any questions you may have. It's at the commission level at this point. Thank you.
Are there, well, I see that there are a few speaker cards, and since this is the third meeting that for this item, we will limit the speaker cards to one minute to be heard. We have enough information to make a decision or to keep comments.
So we do have seven speaker cards, including the applicant's representative.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just to clarify, and, you know, for the commissioners, but also maybe for the members of the public, this letter that we received intends to proceed, I think it indicates, and it would be helpful, I think, for the public to clarify what the intentions are of the applicant, so that it's clear as far as what they would like to proceed with, because it sounds like they want to continue with the original design. And just to clarify the number of units and all that, if, you know, that could be kind of clarified for, again, for the commissioners and the public, if someone could do that, please.
Okay. Yes, definitely. I think that would be great to hear out, and that way it would be, since especially this was received today, we would like the clarity and be informed. Yes, absolutely. Yes. All right. Shall we begin with the speaker cards to get the one minute from each speaker?
Yes. Just to clarify, was the request from the commissioner, was that to have the applicant respond or provide clarity on the letter? Is that?
It could be from the applicant, or maybe I'm getting a...
Are you referring to the letter dated July 2nd?
2nd, right.
Okay. Got it. Not the petition that was received today?
No, not the petition.
Got it, got it.
But I do have questions about the petition, but as far as what the applicant intends to proceed with, just so that, again, we're all clear on that position or that intent, and also members of the public are clear as far as that intent and position from the applicant.
Absolutely. Okay. Let's begin with the applicant and the letter. If we can have the applicant come forward.
Good my lady for 54 years. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is William Molenari. I am both the owner of the property at 301 Jackmar and the applicant. Just for the record, Mr. Gus Carson is no longer representing me as the applicant. His contract was to guide us through the application process, which Mr. Palomo can attest is very complicated, and we needed assistance with that, and also to present the project to the commission. Once that was done, his contract was completed, so I will now be representing myself as the applicant. I wanted to address one of the major issues that came up by the commission at the last meeting, and that was related to the number of houses that the project is proposing. The 15 numbers, not a number that was random or pulled out of a hat, it's a very well-documented number. By my background is as a general contractor developer, as well as I hold several licenses, electrical contracting and home improvement licenses from the state of California, I'm well-qualified to speak on the issue. Before we ever even consider a project, the first thing that's looked at is it, does it have the potential of being economically feasible? I think all of you would agree, any investment, no one's going to make an investment if there's not a reasonable expectation that it would be successful. So we do a very careful financial analysis pro forma, if you will, looking at all of the numbers. One of the difficulties with this property that adds to the expense of the development is that, like most of the projects that are built in the area there, on Bluff and Washington, Greenwood Mines, Olympic and Greenwood, all condominium projects, have a substantial amount of street frontage, which is a big advantage, because you have already the streets, the sidewalks, all the utilities available to you for a large portion of the project. In this case, none of the houses face the street. This property, if you've seen the site, that plant has very little street frontage, so all of the houses will be built need to have new streets and new utilities brought in. But first before, and if also as an infill project, there is the expense of demolition and clearing the project, and of course, in all projects, the grading has to be done to conform to the requirements of the engineering department. But the, so as I said, all of these houses, we have to bring in new streets, new sidewalks, new utilities, and then adding to that is the, all the other permit expenses, city fees, school fees, park fees, sewer connection fees, and then all, of course, the expenses of the interest on construction loans, sales expensive, et cetera. And this particular project, it amounts to $3 million, which is approximately $200,000 per house. So the prospects of cutting down the number of houses, as you can see, if you lower the number of houses, the cost, before you even build the house, goes up, and it, if it was altered, even one house or more or less would still, would make it not financially feasible. And the reason for that is we're locked into a very tight area of valuation for these properties. The neighborhood we're in, most of the homes are in the 700, $800,000 range. There was a home on Bluff Road directly adjacent to my properties, which considered the most desirable area, just sold late last year for $809,000. Most of the homes in the area have sold less than that. So even though these are new homes, we're still limited on the price range we can bring in that would be practical to build in an area of that, with those kind of price ranges. We're trying to keep these houses in a more moderate price range, so that they would not be, would be available to folks that could afford them without getting into the seven figures, as you're aware, everything on the hill is well above that. So our view was that we would bring them in between $800,000 and $900,000. If we can't go any above that, because then we'd be in the seven-figure neighborhood area, and you can't build seven-figure houses in $800,000 or $700,000 neighborhood, it just isn't a practical consideration. So that is how we arrived at that number. Now, the other important aspect of this has to be a concern that everybody, no matter which side of the issue is raised, and that's their concern about protecting a single-family integrity of the neighborhood.
Okay.
And this project is, let me back it up a minute. There's only a couple of uses for this property, either condominiums or for single-family homes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Molenari. I think we have a little more clarity of where the project, well, the description of the project, and we will continue now with the speaker cards. As the applicant, we're going to continue now with the speaker cards.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The, as I said, no matter which side of the issue on, everybody is concerned about maintaining the single-family integrity of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Molenari. We're going to continue with, now, with the general public.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
We're going to continue now with the speaker cards that we have to listen to the comments that we still need to listen to.
So would you like me to continue or to?
If you could, please have a seat now.
Well, ma'am, are you going to cut me off in the middle of my caplets? I am the applicant, and I've had the opportunity to convey my thoughts in the other meetings. Are you not going to allow us in this meeting?
This is the third meeting that we are having, and we are now, we have enough information, and it's the time to make the decision for the project.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We will now continue with the speaker cards, please.
We'll do, Madam Chair. I will call the speaker cards in the order that they were received, so the first speaker will be Mr. Max Masudofarkas.
You will have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we have time.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Max Masudofarkas, appearing on behalf of the applicant and property owner, Bill Molenari. You received a letter from our office detailing our responses to your additional requests at the previous meeting held on June 18th. In the interest of time, we only wish to emphasize the extensive efforts the applicant has made to submit a project that delivers on the needs of the city and of the community. The project incorporates a design and density which are the culmination, not only of door-to-door outreach to over 100 homes within the project radius, but nearly four years of project applications that have preceded this one. After so much time, effort, and expense to craft a project application with the good faith desire to listen to the city and to the community's needs, denial or further delay of this project would raise constitutional concerns arising from the differential treatment of similarly situated projects in the immediate vicinity. We request that you delay no further in approving the project and adopting the recommendations by staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom Uch. Mr. Uch, you will have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
Of course, just good evening to all. My name is Tom Uch, 841 South 33. Last time I mentioned about the numbers and the codes.
I'm sorry, sir, can you put the mic closer to your?
I'm sorry. Last time, at the June 18 meeting, I mentioned about the codes and the measurement and so on and so forth. So this time, since I have only one minute, I'm going to make it short. Now, two things. Number one, when the bylaw, I have not seen the bylaw, okay? The proposed bylaw saying that all the homeowners will confine themselves to park the two cars in the garage. Now, that could constitute a constitutional issue. A homeowner is restricted not to park, not to use the garage as he or she wishes. That's part one. Part two, like I mentioned before, it would be conducive to the community, meaning the lifestyle and the congestion of the traffic and so on and so, including the...
Thank you very much.
Emergency, I'm sorry. I would like to propose just only eight units. Thank you.
Next speaker is Maximiliano Carranza. Sir, you'll have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Maximiliano Carranza. I live on Bluff, 900, and the applicant is right behind my house. Yeah, my wife sent me some information, from Facebook, says this property is a former councilman's house that notoriously refused to approve new developments due to parking and overcrowding of a block. Now, his attorneys threatening to sue the city unless the city allows to develop 16 homes in an area that currently has just one home. This reminds me of a little old limerick, tit for tat. Let me read it out for you. There was a young girl from Rabat who had triplets, nine, pat, and tat. It was fun in a breeding, but hell in a feeding, as she found she had no tit for tat. Tat is me, my neighbors. Is it going to be any, left anything for tat? This is what my concern is, because my namesake mentioned that you have to do it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mrs. Brisa Sotelo. You will have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
I will speak fast. Good afternoon. My name is Brisa Sotelo. I live on Bluff Road as well, and I am here to oppose this. First, I find it disrespectful that the last planning meeting, you asked the owner to reach out to the neighbors and to come back with a different plan. The outreach was never done, and no other plan was brought to you. What kind of tactic is that? The tactic that they use to send you a letter from some attorney is another scare tactic for you. Frankly, I can't afford an attorney. Neither can my neighbors. We're not all going to go in a co-op and call some attorney, but that tells you what kind of games are being placed here. I recognize that the owner is at will to sell his property, and that's okay. Let him sell, let him do what he wants, but you don't have, you don't have to grant him a variance. That's an entitlement. The reason why he's here is because he's asking you to grant him a variance. So going above and beyond for him, when he couldn't respect your wishes, is not fair.
Thank you very much.
I'm opposed.
Next speaker will be Mr. Larry Salazar. Mr. Salazar, you have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. Just wanted to make two quick points. One of them, I really wanted to take a little bit of time to thank staff for all the work that they've done. They've been working hard, and it's been a couple of months, and this is the third meeting, and every time we call and need some questions answered, they've always been very, very good to us, and they've always answered our questions, from Mr. Palombe all the way to the staff here, and I wanted just to publicly thank them for that. The second thing I want to mention, which I wasn't going to till I heard tonight, is this issue about you receiving a petition. Now, the last time there was a petition, especially the same, by the same person here, there were about 500 and something signatures. About 100 of them were valid. They were not valid signatures, and I want to ask you to, if you're going to look at that petition, you need to qualify the signatures. You need to know that they are at least within the 100, the 300-foot radius, and if they're a little bit outside of that, that's fine. But that other petition had people's addresses in Rosemead, it has people's children signing that petition.
Thank you very much.
It had people out in way south of Washington Boulevard. We really don't think it would be fair to go down the, we have a petition...
Thank you.
...plan. Thanks.
The next speaker will be Mrs. Rosemary Torres. Mrs. Torres, you will have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
Is there a timer? Okay, good. Good evening, commission and staff. I am a resident in the South Side, and the South Side is depreciating more and more. I'd like to see something nice built in the area. I'd like to see the youth start buying, and if it's affordable, I think they will. And it's a secure area. I think it should go through. I think we should start getting something nice in our area. Our area is getting too old. I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Dionisia Hurtado. Ma'am, you'll have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dionisia Hurtado. I was reading the last, the flyers that you sent us, the Casa Villar del Sol, 15 units in home, size of the lots is 1,600 to 2,300, and three and four-bedroom house, three to four-bedroom bedrooms and two-car garages. I was asking you if they have two, three to four-bedroom, how many people used to live here? It's a lot of traffic. I live across the street in that house. Parking, traffic is too crowded, it's not fair for the neighborhood and the community. Right now, they're fighting the parking, and there's not, it's not built the 15 units. How much more if they build the 15 units? And then, plus, nobody can park in front of his house, because he put the red paint in the curb. How's that? We cannot put in the red paint in our curb, because we're not, we're not allowed, because he's...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Jesse Hurtado. You will have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
Hi, hello. My name is Jesse Hurtado, and I'm, I live on 306 Jackmar Drive, adjacent to the property. I, just like my mom said, there's 15 units. Honestly, that's too much. Three to four bedrooms, too, also, like, that is too much, especially if he's expecting, like, families of two to three to roll in and move into these houses, right? He doesn't know how many cars they're going to have, you know? It's going to cause, like, a whole lot of traffic. Where's my parking going to go? Honestly, like, my neighbors around my area where I live, they have, like, a good amount of cars, like, I would say more than two, like, three, I would say four. It takes up, like, a whole lot of parking, and sometimes I get a bunch of parking, like, my mom said, she came home one night, right? She said, someone over on the, by the Del Vida, they parked in front of our car, or in front of our house. We don't like that, you know?
Thank you.
All right. I'm against this? No.
Next speaker is Mr. Edmund Robert Velos. Mr. Velos, you have one minute when you reach the podium.
I would think I should have at least as much time as Mr. Molenari had, and that was but more than one minute. All of you in favor, all of you opposed to this project, please stand up. Please, all of you, please stand up. You people have now a petition, you say you can't verify. Well, what do you want us to do? You can go look at them door-to-door, ask the people, they'll tell you they did sign it. And this other guy who told you, oh, there were 551 signatures, now I know that number from three years ago, I gathered those signatures, door-to-door, all in South Montebello, nothing from Rosemead or anything like that. BS, 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 BS. So I, I know that the city council used that to vote against this project three years ago. Look, you guys are sitting, you guys are taking a side against the people of Montebello. You're favor, you're taking the side of the developer, and that's what we're seeing here. We're seeing that the developer has more say in these things than we do. You let them have a lot more say, a lot more time, and we don't get, we don't get the time that they get.
Thank you very much.
At any rate, we're the ones who are, you're supposed to be in favor. We're the ones you're supposed to be representing. The majority of the people, you're seeing it here, you're supposed to represent us, not, not the developer.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Mr. Romero Sandoval. Mr. Sandoval, you have one minute when you reach the podium. Thank you.
We respect everybody, the commissioners and the builders, but I'm against the parking space. You have a, you building houses, two storage houses, and I work in construction, and I know what it is going up there and coming down. You get your knees, that's for young people, and the young people is always have kids. In 24 years, you're going to find out the parking space, you have to have a house built that way in four, four cars parked in the street, or two in the garage and two in the street. I'm with Rosie. You can build 12 houses or something like that, but you have to, not 14 or 15. You have to, to...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm against the project.
Next speaker is Mr. Jorge Martinez. Next speaker is Mr. Jorge Martinez. Mr. Martinez, you have one minute when you reach the podium, thank you.
Good evening, distinguished members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jorge Martinez. I live at 808 South Montebello Boulevard. And I don't know how often you go and drive through southern Montebello, but I'm gonna tell you about seven places that have existing parking problems. The first area is Mines, West Mines and Eastern Mines, uh, west of Greenwood and east of Greenwood. The projects that are over there at the corner of Greenwood and Mines, they occupy all the street practically, all the way to the school, on both sides. And they even park on Greenwood by the, the houses, that, by the house that's a corner house and by the business. They would occupy the whole thing, but right now there's construction and there's cones and stuff like that in the way. But they would, they would park there before. Second area is the unit on the corner of Greenwood Avenue and Olympic. The east side curb of Greenwood Avenue is filled with cars.
Thank you, sir.
That was it? Yeah, thank you.
Our last speaker is Ms. Grace Guzman. Excuse me, you will have one minute when you reach the podium, thank you.
Sorry? Oh, yeah, hi. Hi, I'm opposed to this project. I live here in the South Montebello, and I'm really tired of single homes being replaced by multiple condos or multifamily homes. Also, I was very disappointed whilst watching this at home, I happen to be on vacation through Zoom, at the minimum requirements that this commission has for letting the neighborhood know when any kind of project is going on. We need to really update the minimum requirements, 21st century, text alerts, emails, none of this. We put it in the Whittier newspaper. I'm sure the Whittier people don't care about what's happening here in Montebello. So let's, the bar set it higher on the standards and push back on developers. We are really being pushed to our limits in the South Montebello about the amount of people that we now have to live with. And we don't see the expansion of hospitals, parks, all of those. All we see, oh, yeah, new developments. But what about the other services? What about not just parking, parks, schools? And really set the bar higher when it comes to letting the community know. Don't just put it in the Whittier Daily News, how about the Montebello News?
Okay, we did receive one additional card, I think this will be the last card.
This will be the last one.
This will be the last card. So the next speaker will be Ms. Olga Zapata.
Hello there, my name is Olga Zapata, and I've been a resident of Montebello for over 45 years. And since I only have one minute, I'll go to one point. One, I will definitely hold the city of Montebello responsible for not protecting the residents in a form that they collect taxes from all the property owners, but still we have no new schools, sidewalks are still cracked. The sewer system where I lived on Beach and Forest Street has never worked for 40 years. There was a development on Bluff Road and Washington Boulevard in 2010. Rio Walk, 60 units, collecting property taxes from each unit ranging from $4,000 to $8,000 yearly. The city has collected close to $4 million just from that corner alone. My sidewalks, I've seen seniors fall because the sidewalks are cracked. Our sewer system doesn't work. We have homeless everywhere we look on Bluff Road. And now you want to build another 60 units, collect maybe $10 million in taxes? And does the residents even have safe parks to take our children? No, shame on you. No to the development.
Please be reminded that we are conducting business in the night, so please hold your applause. The last speaker will be David Mabus, I believe is the last name. Mr. Mabus, you will have one minute when you reach the podium, thank you. You'll have, you'll have one minute when you reach the podium, thank you.
One minute?
One minute, thank you.
Is there a timer that I can see? All right, I'm opposed to this, there's too much going on. I live down south by Washington and Bluff. There's just too much going on down there. You can't, we had to get preferential parking to keep our parking space in front of my house so my wife can park from, from a restaurant on the corner. Chagos, you probably all have been there. And we don't need more parking. Of what I've seen of, of what's going on here, you have to have X amount of off-street parking. I don't know if it's per unit or per bedroom of the, of the house. I may be wrong, but I know I have to do it in Monterey Park for my apartment buildings. There has to be so much parking off-street. And there's not gonna be enough, because there's not gonna be enough room between the garage door and the sidewalk, the curb.
Thank you very much.
So I'm opposed.
All right, so this concludes our speaker cards.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sure that concludes our speaker cards.
Uh, no, we bring it back to the commissioners. Are there any comments?
I have a comment, if I may.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Because I think one of the speakers indicated or alluded to the city not doing its due diligence and notifying the neighbors. And I think we covered this point before, but maybe some of the people in attendance today didn't hear it. Maybe that would help clarify that the proper notifications were sent out as required by state law within the radius from the development.
Yes, so in our municipal code, we do have notification requirements which are twofold. It is sending to the 300-foot radius 10 days prior to the public hearing, and then publishing in a, you know, a, a general publication that is circulated, you know, widely, which is the, we use the Daily Journal, and the Whittier Daily News would be the, you know, the local widely publicized publication. So those are the two criterias, and, and that has to be done. It has to be published in the paper 10 days prior to the public hearing. So just to confirm, this was all done May 23 of 2024 this year. So that does comply with the requirements in our municipal code. And anything other than that is above and beyond.
Sorry, just to clarify that point again. The notices are mailers sent to the folks that live within that distance range?
That is correct, to property owners.
Um, I'd like to jump right into this, commissioners. I want to talk about this letter that we received on July 10. So the last time that we met as a commission, we all agreed to continue this with direction to the city to work with the applicant, to come back with other feasible plans or outcomes. We also spoke a little bit about outreach and environmental impact report. I want to take a moment to thank staff for the staff report that you did provide us. But what I, what is my biggest concern is that the applicant's response was a lawsuit, well, I'm sorry, I misspoke, was a letter, and pretty much a threat to us that if we don't grant this variance, then there could be legal implications, right? And I have a huge problem with their response being a threat, and, and I feel it's just grand disrespect to the commission, for the response to be a threat instead of following the recommendation and trying to work with staff. In the letter, they pretty much said, we're, we're proposing as is. I, I, I am also a bit confused as to how they deemed their outreach successful when they told us themselves that 10 people answered out of 112 doors they knocked, which is 8%. They said this is the most effective outreach, right? Door-to-door knocking. Now, we have a petition here with over 500 signatures. So you mean to tell me that 500 people answered their door and had an opinion enough to sign this document, whether it's qualified or not, because this outreach is not qualified either? The 10 people that they spoke to out of 112? So that is a huge concern. The people are not getting the information, the outreach is not happening. And instead, I, I think we've made it very clear, because we, we talked to council, we talked amongst ourselves about what our recommendation was, why we were continuing this matter. And instead, we are being presented a letter saying that if we do not grant this variance, there, it is a, potentially a constitution, a breach in constitutional right to the applicant. That is my concern, commissioners. I'll just be blunt, I do not appreciate feeling as though we're being bullied instead of working with the community, working with the staff, and working with the commission to, to, to grant this variance. That's my, my, my preliminary comments, I'm sure I'll have more comments.
I, I would like to hear maybe from staff and maybe from the applicant as well as, as to what, what we are adopting. I know there was some discussion as to the variances that we would be providing the project. Perhaps we can understand a little bit better why, why these variances are required, or why, why we need these variances.
Madam Chair, for me, yep, okay. Commissioner, great question. So the zone variances are being requested to deviate from the development standards. And the property is currently in R1 zone, it will remain in R1 zone. So there will be no change to the zoning designation as a result of today's action. The applicant specifically is requesting to deviate from the standards for lot size, setback requirements, and lot coverage. So there's three variance requests. So per the code, development standards for new development requires a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet in the R1 zone. In addition to that, the front setback that's required is 20 feet per the current code. And it also requires a 10-foot rear yard setback and a 5-foot side yard setback on both sides of the property. So the applicant is seeking a variance to allow setbacks ranging from five, five and a half feet to six and a half feet in the front yard. However, the rear yard and side yard will be in compliance with the municipal code. So there's no request for a variance for those, which is my understanding, so. And the applicant can correct me if any of this information is wrong. So, and the applicant is also seeking a variance to deviate from the required lot coverage. So per the code, the required lot coverage, meaning the structures, what the structures can cover on the, on the entire lot, right? So currently, our code requires 40% of the total lot area. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the lot coverage to be increased to 47.82%, meaning they need to cover more of the lot, obviously. So that's the second variance request. And then, lastly, there's, the third variance would be to reduce the standard lot size for the R1 zoning from 5,000 square feet to a range between 2,240 square feet and 3,428 square feet. So with regard to the variances, that's the request. The site plan review is, is, is basically, it relates to the proposed 15 units. And it's the, the layout and as well as the, you know, the design, the look and feel from, of what the project will look like. So those are the two actions at the commission level. And then there's a recommendation on the development diagram, which is the tentative track map. That creates the, sort of the development diagram for the proposed project. Ultimately, that would need to go to city council for final approval. So those are the actions before you today.
Thank you. And, and, and again, heading back to the, the variances that are requested, there's the variance for a reduced lot size. I'm assuming that's tied into the variance for the increased lot coverage. With the reduced lot size, you obviously, you're gonna, you're gonna cover more area, you need more, the lot coverage. And the reduced frontage, again, is against the product of the, of the reduced lot size. And I'm assuming those are in concession in order to allow for the circulation element of the development, right? Because they're also including streets.
That is correct, yes. And, and the streets, just to confirm, do comply with fire department requirements? So they're, they're fully built out, and I believe they, I believe they're actually, they may be 26 feet, but I don't know that for a fact.
Thank you. And I, I just want to also, can you, Director, remind us of the, or perhaps the applicant remind us of the, the conditions that would be set as part of the, the, as part of the, the development? The, the conditions for, that would run as part of the, the housing corporation or whoever? The homeowners association, exactly. I think there was, there was three or four that were discussed in our last meeting. I just want to maybe help the public hear them again.
Yes, just referring back to my memory. So there was discussion about whether or not the commission had the ability to add a condition that would require the planning department to review the bylaws, to make sure that they were consistent with the commission's wishes of, I believe there were, we wanted to require the, the garage spaces to be used for parking purposes. And I think that was the, the only request. But, but the answer to, to that is absolutely, we can, at the direction of the commission, add that condition to the site plan review. Site plan review, it, it sort of acts, conditional use permits and site plan review are considered the same per, per our code. So if you're gonna, you know, if you, if you're applying for site plan review, you do not need to apply for a conditional use permit, because conditions can be incorporated into the site plan review request. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you. And, and I believe the conditions were also to use the garage exclusively to house cars. And I think there was another condition in there to also mandate that the residents also limit their parking only to onsite, to not park offsite, is that correct?
That, that gets tricky, because in the R1 zone, the, the development will, will, I mean, they're going to, it will be in compliance with the parking standards. And I, I believe there are, it's a two-car enclosed garage, so each unit will provide a two-car enclosed garage, as well as a driveway that leads up to the garage, as required by our code. Okay.
So we wouldn't be able to make that a condition of the HOA?
The condition of the, the park, the parking, absolutely, I mean.
Yeah, to have them park in, in the garage, but also to limit off-street parking to only that available within the development.
Well, one of the, one of the, the create, I mean, the ideas we could, I mean, we could impose a condition that went further and said that the bylaws would need to establish a parking permit program, for example, that would limit, you know, maybe two vehicles per household that would issue, that would get a permit issued per the bylaws that would, that would, that would, I think to your point, would require the homeowners to, to limit their ability to park on the street, yeah.
Thank you. And, and I, I don't, I don't need to, or, I don't want to beat this to death, but I just want to reiterate the, so the concessions that are, that are part of the development, that a lot of this, even this, these letters seem to be related to the, the issue with parking, or at least to, to bring that as the main issue for, for not liking this type of development. And I think the, the applicant has done quite a lot of work in, in putting together this package. The letter that was sent, I didn't necessarily take it as a threat, I, I think I took it more as a means of information. I think the developer has done several iterations of this project. The first project was, I don't know, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but it's, it was 30 units? I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but it's, it was 30 units? So it went from 30 to 40 units? I don't have that number in front of me, but...
If I may, I do have a memory of that as well. It was originally 31 units, and these were not single-family homes. They were attached row homes, if I believe, like townhomes.
Right. Yeah, and that in itself did not go move any forward. I wouldn't necessarily be, I wouldn't push that forward myself. There was a subsequent iteration of the project. I think it mentioned 25 units at that point.
Yeah, I believe that as a result of those proceedings, there was some discussion about reducing the density. And that was something, I think that, I think it was 25, but I don't quote me on that.
Okay. And now we're here at 16 lots with 15 units. I think that to me has, that history tells me that there's been some negotiation with the public already. I don't think that the, I don't think that the I don't think that the property really meets its goal, being so large. I think, I think that the proposal that's being put forward is a good proposal with 16 units, oh, I'm sorry, 16 lots and 15 houses. I think on the basis of parking alone, I don't think it's, you know... I don't think it's reason enough to really stop the development of this lot.
If I may, when the commission had requested the applicant to work with the city to see if there were other options that they can explore, what about, what is their, what can they build by right? Meaning, what can they build without having to request a variance or without variances? Because the way that this is being presented, it makes me feel like they're, the applicant feels entitled to this variance. So I just want to clarify what the difference would be between him building by right, of course, because the applicant can, you know, it's their property, versus asking the city to go above and beyond and grant these variances to have larger lot sizes, more lot coverage, and what is the third one? And a smaller setback. So has that been explored? Or do we know a by-right number that they can proceed with their project?
I will answer, I'll answer, I think it's twofold, and those are great questions. So on the by-right, for example, any project that has three or more units per municipal requires site plan review. So that triggers discretionary review. So even if this project had three units, it would require planning commission review per the current code. Second, the property is approximately 1.3 acres. If we look at our general plan that was just approved in April of this year, it was April 10th, I believe, it was, we celebrated it, because obviously we had gone through 31 community meetings. It included an environmental impact report. And in that general plan, the designation for this area changed. It was previously, the 1973 general plan designated this area as low density. And the land use designation for low density in 1973 called for 7.5 units per acre, okay? The current general plan, which we refer to as the 2040 general plan, reclassified this area, and the land use designation is neighborhood. With the neighborhood designation, the density now is a minimum of 15 acres, I mean, 15 units per acre, and a maximum of 40 units per acre. And I believe the density associated with this project is 11 units per acre. So they are actually below the goals and policies that are included in the general plan. And whenever a developer looks at, I've been doing this for a very long time, at a project, they go straight, the first thing they do is go to the city's general plan. They look at it and they find out, what is the vision for the city? Because I want to make sure that I'm consistent with the vision before I propose a project. That's the purpose of the general plan, and really, that's why the framework is there. So I hope that answers the question.
For me? Thank you. I actually, you know, feel that the applicant, despite what I'm hearing from the audience, did make a serious effort to find that balance between what they previously had in terms of design, layout, and the number of units proposed to half of what they had. There are some minor things that are not truly complying with the regular standards of the R1 zone that requires our review and approval. And, you know, despite the fact that, you know, this letter that we did receive from the applicant's attorney, to me, it was a little threatening in nature and, you know, aggressive. And, but, you know, it's their right to do so if they choose to, and that's fine. I did appreciate Mr. Molinari's explanation as to the reason that this proposed development is at the number that they chose to stay with. And the balance between being able to develop something that makes financial sense. I think, you know, we would be dishonest to say that we don't like money and we don't want to make money. And it's always that fine balance. But when I first started looking at this proposed development, I was leaning towards, you know, being somewhat positive towards this development. But the members of the public and the community, I have to be honest, kind of swayed me a little bit away from leaning towards being on the side of the development or the developer, because, you know, their concerns to me are valid. And this development, as opposed to the ones a little bit more to the south, are kind of encroaching into this more general R1 development area. If the, and I think we had proposed that in the last go-around, that maybe if the access was somehow provided through bluff, and of course, that would mean having to buy one of the lots that are adjoining bluff and provide that access through there, or if there wasn't access through there, and not encroaching into the R1 zone in the back where most of these neighbors live, it would allow for that higher density to kind of stay, kind of in that buffer zone, not completely encroaching into the R1 zone, but in the in-between zone. And that would make sense to me, that would have made more sense to me. And I know that, you know, again, like I said, there is a balance of making a financial decision on what makes sense. And finding that perfect balance maybe wasn't there or isn't there if the number of units are reduced by one or two more, which would give us, or give the, maybe some of the neighbors more comfort in having less units, less density in their community or that area, and give us as a commission more to work with, with the fact that, you know, the lots maybe are a little bit bigger, the setbacks are a little bit larger, and the lot coverage is reduced and not increased. So I'm conflicted, because I do want to see further development in the city, because we need it. The buying power, in my opinion, that comes from new families, new people moving into our city and bringing in more money that, you know, entices companies to invest in our community. I think we're going to find it by bringing in housing. If we don't have housing, we're not going to get the restaurants and the shopping that everybody complains about. We're not. But, you know, our community members, you know, 500 signatures is a little bit, you know, concerning as far as what they want, and they want to be heard. And I think one of the speakers asked the audience to show by standing who is against this project, and, you know, more than 50% of the audience stood up. And, you know, again, I think I did a count of like the percentage also at the last meeting as far as who was in support and opposition, and there was a slight majority back then. But today, it's overwhelmingly, you know, obvious that the audience is against this project. And so I'm going to find it difficult to be supportive of this. Although, again, I have to give credit to Mr. Molinari and his team for making that effort to find that perfect balance. It was almost there, it's almost there, but it's not quite there for me at this moment.
If I may, given that this is our third meeting on this item specifically, I usually like to wait to hear all of my colleagues speak and the city staff, as well as the applicant, before I go ahead and make a decision or make a comment. But I would like to state that it is very clear that the applicant and staff have worked very hard on this, which I appreciate. Given that all my colleagues, I would say, are more qualified than I am to be here in this seat, I would like to say that I have been a lifelong resident of the city of Montebello. And I am here because I believe that, I'm here to hear what our community wants. And based on what our community wants, it is very clear that this is not what they want. Based on what the applicant presented here tonight, I would like to point out that they also, even though they did do their due diligence to provide and to work with the community, they made it very clear that they were not willing to go any further to go ahead and make any more efforts to sway the community towards approving this project. And I just wanted to leave my comments at that.
Thank you very much. Any final comments? All right, well, definitely, I think we all have heard enough information and have been looking at the applicant's letter from his lawyer and also looking at the signatures, right, that have been provided as well. And definitely, we want to, well, we do have a general plan that the city is working with as well, right? We have development happening all around the city of Montebello. And definitely, we want each zone in our city to also continue to develop and grow in this development. But of course, we have to take into consideration the voice of the city, of the residents, and how we can make this work and how we can, you know, work together as a community as well. Well, after hearing my colleagues as well, and coming into the conclusion, yes, this is a conflict, but coming into the conclusion, I would like to motion to deny the project.
My second?
Comments? If that's okay? Madam Chair?
Any comments or?
Yeah, prior to, you know, taking action on this, you know, and I, you know, being again sensitive to the fact that Mr. Molinari and his design team have worked on this for many years and have worked diligently and hard, a denial of the project, would that mean that it's dead? Or is this dead? Or if a slight deviation from the proposed development can come back at a later time? Just wanted an explanation before we take a vote on this.
So I believe the applicant does have due process? So I will refer, I'll give it to the city attorney to kind of explain what that means.
So yes, the applicant can go through the city's appeal process, which is an appeal to the city council. But after that decision is made, you know, for all intents and purposes, the application is dead, but they can submit a different application at another time.
And before that, I do have one more comment to add on about the parking, right? The parking issue, that is something that's happening in all our neighborhoods. That's not happening just in that area, right? That's happening all over. So definitely, I think that might be even an issue to look at because of, we see this increase of vehicular traffic and parking issues. So definitely, that's something to look into, and while not only in this development, but in many.
Madam Chair, just to add to that, and one of the reasons for me to, for my thought process as well is that the state is making an effort to curb the housing crisis. Right? They're making it easier for developers to come in with more and more units. There are even state laws that don't have to come to this body that will affect you directly as well, like, for example, ADUs. Any of you can convert your garage into another unit. Not only are you losing parking, but you're gaining even more, more density, more cars on the street. Those are things that do not come to this body. And I believe, that one of the reasons that I believe that Mr. Molinari's proposal is good is because we're setting a standard much higher for those houses than we would for any of yours. None of you would have a regulation that limits what you can or cannot do in your garage. And that's something that we're imposing on the project that Mr. Molinari is proposing. I don't want to be, I don't want to sound insensitive to your issues. I just, I think that this body also has a responsibility to think, to think strategically to the future, right? Like the director mentioned, the proposed development is, has a density lower than what our general plan is moving forward. The proposed development also has all these extra conditions that would otherwise seem ludicrous in any other private property. And in looking forward, in looking to that future, at this point, we have a choice. At this point, we have discretion. And looking to the future, we might not be at that point. That's it.
Thank you very much.
So I believe we have a motion, and we have a second? So a motion from Chair Morales, a second by Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
All right, I will take roll call. Chair Morales?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina?
Nay.
Commissioner Cuevas?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Lamelli?
I'll also abstain.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
Is that, we have a quorum? All right, we have, the item one is denied. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, we'll move into item two, Madam Chair. Item two is a compliance review for the Sizzler's property located on Beverly Boulevard. I believe Daniel Ruiz is here. He will provide us with a quick update. This will be the last compliance review that is required on a quarterly basis. And I think the next compliance review will be required next year. So without further ado, Daniel, please provide us with a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission and the public. Tonight, I will be presenting the compliance review associated with conditional use permit case number PC 2022-0011-CUP for the Sizzler's restaurant located at 1908 West Beverley Boulevard. On May 10th, 2022, conditional use permit case number PC 2022-0011-CUP was filed to allow the on-sale dispensing of beer and wine at the project site. On June 21st, 2022, the planning commission approved the CUP to permit the sale of alcohol for onsite consumption at 1908 West Beverley Boulevard. Condition number seven of the resolution approving the CUP, resolution number 09-22, requires an annual compliance review due quarterly for the first two years of alcohol sales. On June 28th, 2024, the applicant submitted the compliance report for the, for this quarterly compliance review. And on July 10th, 2024, planning staff conducted a site visit to confirm that the applicant is in compliance with the conditions of approval for the CUP. Regarding compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, SEQA is not applicable to this compliance review because this item is not considered a project, does not have the potential for resulting in physical change in the environment, and since no discretionary action is being taken by the planning commission. Can you change it to the next slide, Lina? Staff recommends that the planning commission receive and file the report attachments and/or any other supportive evidence to confirm the following. Sizzler USA Restaurant Inc., the applicant, has demonstrated compliance with the conditions of approval listed in resolution number 0922. Thank you, this concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions or comments, as is Kirk Tason-Turne, the representative for Sizzler.
Madam Chair, if I just may add one. I believe this Sizzler is the highest-producing Sizzler in the western region, but I will defer to the operator. I will just say that their operation is...
All right.
Are there any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Are there any questions for staff?
Just wanna say I'm impressed.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Sure, let's hear the applicant.
Do you have anything to say? No, 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 I just...
And we'll bring it back to any staff comments?
This is a receive and file, Madam Chair, so...
Congratulations, Sizzler.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. And can we get a motion? Roll call and a motion.
I'll make a motion to receive and file item number PC-2022-0011-CUP.
I will second. Perfect. So we have a motion by Commissioner Lamelli, seconded by Vice Chair Medina to receive and file this item. Chair Morales?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lamelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
That motion is approved, thank you.
All right, great. So we'll bring it to the planning commission orals. Are there any announcements or requests for future agendas?
One of the members did mention a good point. I know we have a Montebello paper now, right? Is it a paper, what is?
News.
Like a newsletter that we receive in the mail? Because I've been receiving it for a while now. Do, I know we include, like, you know, any... Okay, I see. Okay, that was my only question.
I have a comment. Can you guys hear me okay? Maybe I can't hear myself. At the, at the ends, right? I just wanna say that, you know, again, we deal with a project that seems to divide our opinions, and it's okay. We're freely, you know, expressing our opinions and positions about some of these projects that we are dealt with, and this was not an easy one. So I appreciate everyone's input and, you know, openness about how they feel and why they support or oppose the project without getting in, you know, conflict with each other. So, you know, I think we handled that really well, so congratulations to us. Thank you for, you know, everyone being so good to each other, because I've seen, you know, previous commissions where, you know, heated debates kinda get a little personal, and that's never good. So when we have the freedom to be able to express our positions freely, it's refreshing. So thank you, everyone.
Absolutely, yes. I think we were able to all conclude with our, put everything together, and that's why it was necessary to bring it all the way to this last meeting, or to this meeting, in order to make that decision for the best. And so any other comments? All right?
If I could just add one, when, I know there was a request from Vice Chair Medina for a Brown Act sort of refresher. I do have that on the radar, and I'm gonna work with the city attorney's office to provide that one of the next two meetings. We will get it on the agenda, so just wanna address that.
Okay.
Thank you. And so I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.